To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have a roll call.
Council President O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Uh, Councilmember Vought.
Here.
Uh, Councilmember Alwerson.
Here.
And Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
All right, thank you, Jason. So first up, we have a couple of proclamations, and the first proclamation is National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
A proclamation, whereas every day more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence, and more than 200 are shot and wounded with an average of more than 17,000 gun homicides every year, and whereas in Washington there are an average of 853 gun deaths every year with a rate of 10.8 deaths per 100,000 people, and whereas cities across the nation, including Renton, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions, and whereas protecting public safety is a mayor's highest priority, and whereas mayors and law enforcement officers in partnership with local violence intervention activists and resources know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe, and whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see an increase in firearm homicides and non-fatal shootings across the country, increased calls to domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence, and whereas people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadiya Pendleton, who was tragically shot and killed at age 15 in 2013, and also honor other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims, and whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, a color chosen because hunters wear orange, to announce themselves to other hunters in the woods, and because orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life, and whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2nd, the first Friday in June 2023, to help raise awareness of the impacts of gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors, and whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim June 2nd, 2023 to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Renton, and I encourage all residents to support efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. In witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 22nd day of May 2023. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
President O'Halloran.
I move the proclamation to be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council adopt the proclamation as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. And tonight to accept the proclamation, we have Laura Myers. Like to say a few words?
The podium, sorry.
I appreciate you honoring this day as Gun Violence Awareness Day. I am a member of the Renton Moms Demand Action Group, and we work really hard in our community and in our nation overall to prevent the senseless act of gun violence, and we appreciate your support.
We're gonna take a picture now if you'll come.
Would your tape be come up?
Yeah. Perfect.
Councilmember Rivera cannot see you, so just, there we go.
I'll send out my check jobs.
All right, and next up is National Public Works Moment. I mean, National Public Works Week.
Moment.
That's a longstanding, long-running joke. The Public Works Department, so.
Proclamation, whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure and services that are vital importance to a sustainable and resilient community, public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Renton, and whereas such infrastructure and services could not be provided without the dedicated effort of Public Works professionals, who are engineers, airport professionals, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, maintaining, improving, operating, and protecting our city's mobility, transportation, networks, water, wastewater and surface water utilities, solid waste systems, airport, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our residents, whereas it is the public interest for the residents, civic leaders, and children of Renton to gain knowledge of and to maintain an active interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in our community, whereas 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, connecting the world through public works, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, whose theme challenges our residents and employees to think about the role public works plays in creating a great place to live, work, and play. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, do hereby proclaim, May 21st to 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week in the City of Renton, and I encourage all residents to recognize the contributions Public Works professionals make every day to protect our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. In witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 22nd day of May 2023. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
I move that the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. And tonight to accept the proclamation is our own Martin Pastoucha.
Thank you, Mr. Pavoni, Council President O'Halloran, and members of the City Council. On behalf of the 203 men and women of your Public Works Department, we thank you for this moment. These team individuals worked tirelessly throughout the year to plan, design, construct, operate, and maintain the vital infrastructure and provide the essential services the community relies on for their work, school, and home life. Thank you for your support, recognition, and acknowledgement of these hard-working, dedicated employees.
All right, thank you. Picture time. Okay. So I tease Martin with the Public Works Department, but the Public Works Department actually does a lot of work that, the things that keep our city running smoothly and the things that we come to expect as residents, they do a lot of the heavy lifting, so we do appreciate their work. All right, next up is special presentation for Renton Employee Life Saving Award.
Good evening, Mayor Pavoni and Council. My name is Ellen Bradley Mock, and it's an honor for me to serve as the Human Resources and Risk Management Administrator. I would like to introduce to you at this time one of our judicial specialists, Brenda Garcia and.
Listation.
Listation.
What's your name?
Listation, Listation Kinlow. I want to give you some background on this life-saving award. I'm pleased tonight to offer this life-saving award to one of our employees, Brenda Garcia. On November 1st of 2022, Brenda saw her coworker, Listation, exhibit signs of choking. Brenda recognized the severity of the situation when the coworker couldn't talk, pointed to her throat, looked panicked, and had discoloration beginning in her neck. Using her training, Brenda jumped into action and successfully performed the Heimlich maneuver, saving Listation's life. Brenda, using her training, excuse me, Brenda has maintained a continuous commitment to staying up to date on her first aid and CPR training throughout her life and career. This isn't the only time that Brenda has used this life-saving skill. She saved two other lives prior to this. Her last training update was organized and provided by a fellow city employee, Tom Putoff, at the Renton Community Center in the fall of 2021. Staying up to date allowed her to respond to this workplace emergency effectively and with urgency. Her actions have inspired others within the city and reinforced the importance of our employee safety programs, including first aid and CPR training. Brenda has worked for the city for the past three and a half years as a judicial specialist within the judicial branch. Brenda, thank you for your service to the city, and thank you for your service in saving Listation's life. I mean, she saved her life. And staying committed to our safety programs means the world to us. We could not appreciate you more.
Thank you.
And I'm sure Listation feels the same.
Definitely.
So I'm honored to present to you the Renton Employee Life Saving Award for your life-saving actions. The only thing I want to say is I just thank God that I was in the right place at the right time. It was an unfortunate situation, but I'm just glad that I was there. Spoken like a hero. All right. Yep, go ahead and go on.
Yes.
Shouldn't you be pretty short? Probably genetics.
Yay. So we are on to the administrative report.
Good evening, everyone. The first of Sustainability and Solid Waste 3 recycle events was held on Saturday, May 13th, at Renton Technical College. Materials collected at the May event included oversized metal and styrofoam. The event served over 411 participants and prevented over 12.26 tons of metal and 1,190 pounds of styrofoam from landfill disposal, thus keeping these materials circulating in the economy to provide green jobs and produce new products. For customers' information and to promote recycling year-round, staff produced and distributed the Recycling Resource Guide, which provides a listing of local recyclers offering convenient recycling services for a variety of materials not collected at the curbside or at city events. The guide is available on our website. Partnering with the Salvation Army, Rotary Food Bank resulted in 100 pounds of food donated by recycle event participants helping to support emergency food assistance in our community. The next scheduled recycle event is June 10th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the Renton Technical College North parking lot. Mattresses and box springs, cardboard, tires, and styrofoam will be collected. For more information, please contact the Renton Recycle Events hotline at 425-430-7398, or email Julie Purcell at jpurcell@rentonwa.gov. Pop-up lunch schedule. In addition to lunch, each event will have hygiene kits, socks, and food for dogs and cats. Wednesday, May 24th, from noon to 1:30 at 300 Rainier Avenue North, sponsored by the Emergency Feeding Program SOS. This will be held regularly on the 2nd and 4th Wednesday through December 2023. Friday, May 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., 126 Logan Avenue North, sponsored by SOS Food Lifeline Pop-Up, will be held regularly every Friday through December. Spanish-speaking CPR classes. In partnership with Central Rendu, the Renton Regional Fire Authority will be conducting CPR courses in Spanish. Classes are scheduled for Saturday, June 3rd, and Saturday, November 4th. Classes will be from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. and held at the Renton Regional Fire Authority Station 13, located at 18002 108th Avenue Southeast in Renton. Visit rentonrfa.com to view classes and register via Eventbrite. The King County Flood Control District is considering developing a flood hazard management plan for the Lower Green River Corridor that would guide future investments to reduce flood hazard risks over the next 30 to 50 years and shape flood protection planning along the Green River in Auburn, Kent, Renton, Sea-Tac, Tukwila, and unincorporated King County. To inform the plan, the district prepared a draft programmatic environment impact statement that is available for public review and comment through June 19th of 2023. The draft, P E I S, analyzes three different approaches to reducing flood hazard risks in the Lower Green River Corridor while providing other important benefits. More information in the P E I S document can be found at lowergreensepa.org. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonwa.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have audience comment. We do have a number of people signed up. When I call your name, please approach the podium. You'll have three minutes to speak. There's a timer right in front of you. When the little light turns yellow, please start wrapping up your comments. Also, give us, when you come up to the podium, give us your name, city of residence, and what you'd be discussing. And first up is Jacob Trio.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jacob, and I am a resident of the City of Renton for the past five years. And I'm here tonight to speak with respect to the regulation of hard drugs and use laws. And as a resident here in the City of Renton, I've, I've found it harder over the last five years since I've lived here to be able to take my kids out to the parks down and take a stroll in downtown Renton due to the lax, lax of enforcement on drugs. I hate having to tell my kids when I'm walking down to, down at Tiffany Park or even Coolon Park, and they're asking me what these orange things are on the ground, or what, what these little things are. It's one thing for me to have to look out for what they're picking up and putting into their mouth, maybe it's food or rocks or whatever that is, but it's another thing to really have to look out for things that really may truly endanger their, their health. And so with, with the enforcement and the ordinance that's being pushed here, I really strongly urge for, for this to, for the enforcement for, of hard drugs to really come back into play and to be able to help get this off of our streets so that I, so that I can continue with my wife and my children to be able to really live and thrive and really see what all of the City of Renton has to offer as they grow up and we build our family and lay our roots here. And that, I thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. And next up is Eric Tran.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Eric Tran. I'm a resident of Mercy Island, but I work here in the City of Renton. I manage property right across from Liberty Park, just at the entrance of beautiful downtown Renton. I'm here to show my support for the new ordinance to regulate dangerous drug and drug waste. The open-air illicit use and disposal of drug and waste that is happening regularly in front of my business and the business establishment of many others here has been a major concern, public safety concern for all of us. The frequency of property crimes, shoplifting, thefts, trespassing, and defacing of public property is unprecedented. It is incredibly frustrating that the penalty for those using drugs on our street for the first two offenses is a diversion, which doesn't have to be accepted. Now, Renton police officer contacted 350 offenders in downtown Renton area and offered them drug treatment and housing resources. Now, only 10 of them agreed to this referral. Now, from the record that we obtained from the City of Renton Police Department, our tenants, our tenants call the police to report crime in 2021 158 times. Now, this is the year where a lot of businesses were shut down because of COVID. In 2022, the number went up to 2,000, 2, 201, and the number continued to rise in 2023. These are the number of crime reported, but there are a bunch of that was not reported due to the fact that these are small family businesses where the husbands and wives and siblings are just trying to run a struggling business. They're trying to dig themselves out of the COVID hangover right now. And there's also a language barrier and a perception that the police don't do anything, but that's not true. The reality is the law do not allow for enforcement. Now, your support of this ordinance to give law enforcement the tool to take drug offender into custody, get them in front of community and drug court, make sure they get treatment, and reward them with a clean record if they go through the treatment. This show compassion to the offender as well as our businesses and our communities. Again, I thank you for moving forward with this ordinance, and I firmly believe this is the first step in the right direction for the City of Renton to be a safe place for its resident and its businesses. Thank you very much.
Okay, next up is Joe Trio.
Hello, distinguished council members. My name is Joe Tru, and I am a resident of Normandy Park and also the president of Evergreen Beauty College, which we have one of our campuses located on the 1200th block of North Bronson Way. Tonight, I am representing nearly 200 students, along with a dozen members of teachers and staff members at this specific campus, as I express our support for this ordinance against drugs. Over the last 10 years, we proudly opened this campus in the city that my wife grew up in as a child. We were excited to be involved in reigniting the business community here in Renton. We've participated in Renton River Days. We've done free haircuts for families in the area, volunteering to help people transition into their new careers. We've contributed thousands of dollars in free services to this community. Now, in 2023, we're losing an estimate of $10,000 each month as we struggle to educate in this environment. Students choose not to attend, staff choose not to work, or if they do start, they leave shortly after because of the drugs and crime in our complex. Since the beginning of the year, we have had over half a dozen of our students and staff cars broken into. We've seen individuals openly smoke crack, meth, and do heroin, along with other inappropriate behavioral activities in our parking lot. Two months ago, on the first day of a new class, we had a rob, robbery in our complex with the individual overdosing in front of our staff and students. We had to lock down the school with all the police presence. We have had to hire on private security and ask the Renton Police Chief and the Northern Era Commander to personally visit our campus to show our students and staff that the city cares about their safety, which is made up of majority of women and young moms. When students choose to unenroll, staff choose to quit, and customers choose to leave the city, our school loses tens of thousands of dollars in tuition and services. If we do a simple math on conservative, estimate of losing $10,000 a month of student tuition and customer visits, by the end of this year, we will have lost in this, and the City of Renton has also lost over $120,000. Students are not spending their money here with surrounding local businesses, and the impact is only magnifying. Personally, we have a number of our students who have struggled with substance abuse in their previous lives, and when they are taking this place at our schools, this activity is taking place outside of our classrooms. We see the temptation gets the best of some of these students, who were hoping that this would be a new beginning for them, and my heart's just broken when it takes the wrong direction. This ordinance would not completely solve the problem, but it would support our students and staff. This ordinance will allow law enforcement to have more tools to actively support our students and help individuals struggling with addiction get the help that they need. We ask you for this vote in support of this ordinance. Thank you.
All right, next up is Dave Brethour. You sure? Name's here. Okay, David Malik.
Here and City Council members, my name is David Malik. I'm a resident of the Renton, and also I have the businesses here. In last one years, I see the young mans, they come very healthy, and after six months, I see them, they are dying. And I have the business on 300 revenue. I see them, 8 o'clock, 8:00 p.m., they are leaning against the building. And when I go in the morning, they are in same position. They have not moved even one inch because they take drugs all night and they are there. This ordinance is not only to stopping the crime, I think we're going to save the lives here. If you read the story in the Seattle Times, homeless people are, they are dying because drugs. And I see the immigrants, and I'm an immigrant also, no offense here. I see the peoples come here, they see those drugs, they see those blue pills, and they see now M&amp;M in different colors. They are taking, they are dying also. And we talk all the time about inflation and tax revenue. I think these drugs are affecting the inflation. It's costing city more and more. If you guys do the study, you're going to find out in drugs and crime is adding in the inflation. I think city need to analyze how much money as a city and fire department they are adding to just stopping the drugs. And if you can stop these people taking the drugs, take to the treatment, I think that will help everyone, and I'm supporting fully. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, next person signed up is Hector Hernandez.
Hello, City Council. My name is Hector Hernandez. I live in Renton all my life, and I'm here to support what you guys are gonna do. And my family owns a business here in Renton for the past 11 years on 1222 Bronson Way. And since 2020, we have five break-ins, and we have called the police in about five times in those, since 2020 to 2023. And a lot of, it's not working for us. We're, we're a small family business. We live in fear. And hopefully, with this law, it can help us pursue our liberty and happiness. And we, my family does support it, which is gonna, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and then next, Randy Corman.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council President, Council Members. My name is Randy Corman. I'm a resident of Renton. And I, I want to start out by thanking you all for unanimously passing this ordinance or putting it through to second and final reading at the last council meeting. And I want to emphasize that, well, first of all, that I agree with all the speakers.
Recording in progress.
All the speakers that came before me. This is about, really more than anything, saving lives. And I remember in the presentation last week that we talked about 47 lives that had been lost in Renton to drug overdoses in 2022, and I, I know this is gonna make a difference. I, you know, I will address the fact that the state, you know, I think surprised many of us by actually coming through with its own state law during this time. I did read the state law. I'm sure you have too. 80 to 90% of the legislators voted for that state law. It very closely matches the ordinance you put through. So I think that really tells you that you were at the right spot with the ordinance that you had developed. And I just want to point out that the, the state law specifically allows for cities to regulate paraphernalia and, and do some of the things that your ordinance does. So to me, they seem very compatible, and I am excited that we're gonna have both this corrected statewide, as well as have our own specific law that even addresses some. that even addresses some other issues here in the city. And one of the issues being the paraphernalia that some of the other speakers have addressed. It's been kind of a danger to children as well as littering the parks. So with that, I don't need to repeat my testimony from last week, but I just thank you again. I urge you to approve second and final reading tonight, and I thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. And that's everybody that signed up for in-person testimony. We do have a few people signed up virtually.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We do have three people signed up. The first person is Diane Dobson. Diane, go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council and Administration. I'm Diane Dobson. I'm the CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce, and I'm a lifetime resident of Renton. I speak tonight on the ordinance of legislation regarding the Blake decision. Last week, I watched the committee of the whole presentation, and I was brought to tears, not just because there were faces in the presentation that I recognized from the streets of Renton, including the young woman who passed away at the vacant lighted former city attorney's office from an overdose after asking for help. But I'm also someone who's administered naloxone three times, one at a Safeway when someone dropped in front of me and two times in front of my own home with people on the river trail. I've sat on numerous friends or family members to detox them and hold them captive until beds and rehab become available. I've seen the withdrawals. I've seen the desperate cravings these drugs caused where the next fix is all they're consumed with. And the idea of an overdose is more welcoming than the withdrawals that the person is about to experience. And I'm someone who's experienced the greatest of loss. I lost my brother to a heroin overdose. So I come to you from a place of awareness and a place of experience as I say thank you to the council on moving forward the legislation presented and suggested by the city administration. The state's legislation is not a fix. Our city's legislation is not a fix either, but it is a start. It's a start in disrupting the behavior and process for the person who may be suffering from a mind-altering substance abuse addiction, a disease. But now the pressure's on to you as council and to us as a community. When the state failed to come to resolution before the end of the session, they, they actually gave communities a gift, a gift to customize and tailor solutions that makes sense to them, to their challenges that are unique to them, which ends it as a gift to the city of Renton for us to discuss this ordinance and begin with a starting place, to begin the conversations on how we might fix things, to help people, to bring in partnerships with resources and organizations to provide the help that's needed to some of our most vulnerable community members on our streets. So we can discover together incentives that work to encourage someone to make another choice other than substance abuse or coke, because right now, the only tool the state feels they have is that criminalization. And until we come up with an incentive that works greater, I, I tend to agree. And to work as a community to find ways to reinstate hope and purpose into these individuals who do need that help and who do need that love. And I say back to a commenter from last week who talked about loving our community. And yes, we need to love our neighbors and those in the community. But spoken as a mother, loving a person is not unconditional enabling support as they continue to make choices leading to their spiral. Sometimes the best love is the tough love. When you let someone know you love them more than they currently love themselves, and you make those tough choices for them. So thank you to the council for moving the ordinance forward tonight and beginning our work as a community.
All right, thank you.
The next person we have is David Smith. David, go ahead.
Okay, David Smith here. Hopefully, you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Hi. Awesome, excellent. I live in Seattle, but I am a business owner and property owner in Renton, specifically in the downtown core with properties and businesses that I represent along Third and Burnett and Third and Wells. And I full-heartedly support the new drug ordinance that people are speaking about. And it might just be very brief to say we can't have an environment that allows for a peaceful environment for drug users to sit around and cause harm to themselves or to others. We must have deterrence. There must be mechanisms in place for the intervention of people using harmful drugs. They will not just kill themselves, but they will cause damage and harm to others. I've had dozens of property crimes throughout the years, but I can speak of three, which I won't go into any detail. But I've had three serious property crimes in the last six months along Third, which cost me thousands of dollars, and there were costs associated to tenants that I represent. In each case, each individual was an addict. I recently had a property crime where I had somebody arrested who had a history of over 20 years of crimes and drugs. We have to catch people at the earliest stages of drug-using behavior and criminal behavior to have any possibility of rehabilitation down the road. Like many, we all have family members, including myself, that have gone down drug road. And I want nothing more when family or the public cannot save them for law enforcement to be able to have stricter mechanisms in place for those people to have just the, even the possibility of rehabilitation. We can argue how that's done, but we can't let people just sit there and cause harm to themselves and harm to others. And so I fully support this ordinance. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The next person I have is Marcus Olson. Marcus, go ahead.
If he's muted.
Do you hear me now?
Yes, barely.
Okay, I'm Marcus Olson. I own Burger Addict. I've been here for eight years, and I got a, both of a personal story and a business story. I was adopted at 11 months old because I walked outside naked and the police picked me up. And I'm a product of getting, getting a second chance by having policies that made sense. My biological father was killed by the DEA after two weeks after I was taken. So I was literally on the, whatever, whatever that situation that was. My birth mother died of heroin when I was in my twenties. I was adopted in Washington State. I later became a three-star Michelin chef in Paris and London. I also worked in the White House. I started Burger Addict to give quality products, the popular food in Renton and beyond. And I have expanded to other cities. And I held off moving my location to a better location because of the potential violence and drug-related violence that I grew up with when I was, before I was adopted in the city. So that's what I would like to speak about. I think there's a lot of good work to be done, but I think there's other things that can be done as well so we can have a better environment for businesses in Renton and beyond. So thank you for making the decision. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
That is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Well, I want to thank everybody for, that, that joined us tonight, either in person or online, for coming and speaking to the council. It's really important that we hear from the community, especially on these kind of topics. So thank you for your time. All right, next up is the consent agenda. There are two items for council consideration. Are there any items that council would like pulled?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
Hearing none, I move that the council approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, second by Councilman Prince, that the consent agenda be approved as published. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. We are on to unfinished business. Council President O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee has two reports to present, but by choice of the Finance Committee, we'll be presenting them. Thank you.
So I go, no. Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee has five reports to present.
Okay.
So five Finance Committee reports.
Yeah.
Finance Committee report. The first one is regarding vouchers. Approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. One accounts payable, total payment of $11,683,343.58 for a number of vouchers, payroll benefit with, withholding vouchers and a wire transfer. Two is payroll, which is a total payment of $1,884,889.77 for payroll vouchers that include 662 direct deposits and 21 checks. This is the April 15th through 30th pay period. Kidder Matthews vouchers totaling $32,044.24 and municipal court vouchers totaling $15,723.9 and this is signed by the Committee Vice Chair member.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Alberston.
I move council concur with the Finance Committee Committee reports.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Alberston, second by Councilman Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding supplement number seven to a contract with Partite Incorporated. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve supplement number seven to contract 20-127 with Partite Incorporated to provide additional construction management services totaling $51,316.16 for the Williams Avenue South and Wells Avenue South conversion project. This too is signed by the Committee Vice Chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Alberston.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Alberston, second by Councilman Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
The next is regarding a, an agreement with the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve an inter-agency agreement with the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force program in order to accept $20,000 in grant funds for the use of the state and local overtime and authorized expense strategic initiative. This is signed by the Committee Vice Chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Senator Alberston.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Alberston, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
The next report is regarding a limited-term position for the City Hall lobby. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the creation of a limited-term Secretary Two position in the Executive Services Department. This is signed by the Committee Chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Alberston.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Alberston, second by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Hey, the final report is regarding a grant from, uh, what's called For Culture Arts. It's a For Culture Arts Grant. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize staff to accept the Full Culture, For Culture Sustained Support Program Award of $11,000 and sign the grant agreement. This too is signed by the Committee Vice Chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Alberston.
One final time, I move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Alberston, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries. All right, we are on to Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alberston.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We are on now to legislation. There's one ordinance for second and final reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
Uh, staff has revised our ordinance from last week due to the state's passage of Senate Bill 5536. And so I move the council approve the revised ordinance as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Prince, that the council approved the revised ordinance. As read, okay.
However, I realize that Jason hadn't, didn't have a chance to read it.
Didn't though. That will kind of be next here, I think, isn't it? Do we have to make that motion first?
I think the intended motion is to move to, move the revised ordinance forward to second reading.
Yeah, yes. So that's what we just did.
That's what we just did. So now Jason reads it.
Now he reads it. You're, okay, you're in the right spot.
All right, thank you. Get by with a little help from my friends.
Ordinance number 6112 regarding amending Rent Municipal Code 6-12 to regulate dangerous drugs. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, repealing and replacing Title VI, Chapter 12 of the Rent Municipal Code to regulate dangerous drugs and drug waste, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.